I'd like to call through order the special meeting of the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission for April 5th, and ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under whose it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all members of the commission, except for Mr. Lox, are First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on March 15, 2006. Are there any corrections, deletions, additions? Leave the minutes as published. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our March 15, 2006 meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from March 15, 2006.
I have a motion from Ms. Lartano. Do I have a second from Ms. Osborne? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is disclosure of ex parte communications. For anyone that has ex parte communications regarding anything on the agenda tonight that they would like to disclose.
I've had ex parte communication with Mr. Jones over the El Pollo Loco.
Thank you. Any other?
I too. Conversation with Mr. Jones today.
Okay. Thank you. Any other?
I had a phone message from Mr. Jones, which I was unable to return also on the El Pollo
Any further ex parte communications? Okay. Next item on our agenda, old business, case 05-300-00007. McDonald's Drive-Thru at Canyon Trails Plaza 2 Use Permit. Request for the approval of a use permit for a restaurant with drive-thru facility, generally located on 1.12 acres, 1,400 feet north of Van Buren Street, on the west side of Estrella Parkway, within the proposed Canyon Trails Plaza Phase 2 commercial center. The applicant is John M. Smales and Associates, LLC, open in the public hearing, and asks for the staff presentation.
Chairman Horseman, commission members, members of the public, good evening. This particular request, as you noted, is for a McDonald's drive-thru restaurant located within the Canyon Trails Plaza Phase 2, which is highlighted in red on the aerial photograph in your agenda of support material. It's located on the west side of Estrella Parkway, approximately 1/4 mile north of Van Buren Street. The zoning ordinance allows for convenience uses, such as the one proposed to be reviewed and recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, approved by the city council. They're subject to the provisions of the zoning ordinance, which requires additional assessment regarding the appropriate location and conditions of the use or operation. The ordinance also provides that the use could be reviewed and findings made on granting the use permit determining that it would not materially be material detrimental to persons residing or working in the vicinity of the property, and that the proposed use is reasonably compatible with uses permitted in the surrounding area. The staff report noted that this property is also subject to the city center gateway overlay district, but I believe, in fact, that being part of the original Canyon Trails PAD that that may not be correct. However, the applicant has been encouraged to comply with the standards of the overlay district to the greatest extent possible. The overlay district itself ordinarily requires a use permit for convenience uses as well, but only car wash uses are restricted from being within 75 feet of Estrella Parkway north of Van Buren. As noted, this is located in the Canyon Trails Plaza Phase 2 development, which is north of Phase 1, which is commonly referred to as the Safeway Center at Canyon Trails. There is an application for site plan review that's been submitted for the property, which also is included in your agenda packet. It anticipates adding multiple pad locations with office buildings to the rear and some, what we might call some minor retail locations also toward the west portion of the property. The surrounding land uses around the property consist of commercial development that's anticipated to the north in Parkway Village. Across the street is a combination of properties owned by Evergreen DevCo, that part of which is being developed as a commercial center, is Estrella Crossings, and then north of that is a PAD that's recently been submitted for Estrella Commons, which is a mixed-use project including residential and commercial uses. Conceptual plans and building elevations have also been submitted for the property. We'll stay this way. Yeah, we'll go this way. We'll put north at the top. The proposed McDonald's building itself will contain approximately 4,900 square feet, and it will have indoor restaurant seating in addition to the proposed drive-through component. The restaurant will be situated in the southerly portion of the pad, and will have dual-order windows and a single drive-through lane that will come around the south side of the building. The drive-through traffic then will exit through the parking area and circulate back through the parking area to reach the main drive aisles. The driveway opening that's located at the eastern portion of the site will be restricted to a right-in-only in order to avoid any kind of difficulties with traffic trying to come in and out of this location. There's vehicle stacking space for six cars before the menu boards in dual lanes, and stacking space for additional three vehicles provided between the menu boards and the cash pickup windows. To minimize the impact, visual impact of the drive-through lane, there will be a minimum of three-foot-high screen wall constructed along the south side of the drive-through and west side of the drive-through lanes. The proposed McDonald's restaurant will be open for business from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week, and the site plan shows a total of 48 parking spaces to be provided within the specific boundaries of this development plan. The staff has reviewed the proposed use in the conceptual site plan. Oh, I'd like to share with you the conceptual elevations, which are designed to be consistent with the Canyon Trails Plaza Phase 2 design guidelines. The staff has reviewed the proposed use and conceptual site plan for the proposed use to ensure adequacy of the parcel size and configuration to provide for proper access and internal circulation. At the direction of staff, the applicant modified the conceptual development plans and made that entrance off of the main drive as an entrance only to avoid conflicts at the main entry into the shopping center. The conceptual development plans also provide for adequate traffic access, queuing lanes, and pedestrian circulation, and the planned orientation and location of the drive-through lanes, menu boards, and pickup windows are consistent with the city's design guidelines. As we typically know, the approval of the use permit is not approval of the conceptual site plan, and it will still be subject to site plan review. In terms of citizen participation, we utilized an alternate notification process for this case, since it was surrounded by vacant property or existing or planned commercial properties. We sent notices to the owners of property within 500 feet of this site. No comments or inquiries were received regarding the request. I will note that this matter was scheduled for the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting but was tabled. That allowed staff and the applicant time to work on the driveway access issue, which has now been resolved. The staff has recommended approval of this use permit, subject to the eight stipulations that are noted on your agenda packet. That concludes my presentation, and I would stand for any questions.
Any question from the commission for staff regarding this project? Mr. Gelsner.
Mr. Schmitz, when you talked about the city center gateway overlay district ordinance, if I remember correctly, while Canyon Trails has zoning rights, do they not have to abide by the landscape guidelines, et cetera, for all forthcoming projects that come through, since that ordinance was passed last year or the year before, if I remember correctly?
Yeah. Chairman Horseman, Commissioner Gelsner, I believe that the vesting of the zoning through the Canyon Trails PAD made it such that they would not have to comply with it, but we are encouraging the applicant to comply to the greatest extent possible.
But the Canyon Trails PAD talks only about zoning rights, not about landscape requirements, whereas the gateway overlay district talked about landscape requirements, and this is coming in very subsequent to the passage of that ordinance. And I don't think there's any rights comply, you know, extended to this project that they don't have to comply with landscaping that is in that ordinance.
I believe this issue has come up before. I'd like to defer to Mr. Kraus to answer that, if I could, please.
Chairman Horseman, Commissioner Gelsner, the landscape requirements, they're in the zoning ordinance, and the 1998 Canyon Trails Development Agreement, and the cross standards at that time, so we can't oppose any new zoning standards on them.
Landscaping is part of the zoning. So, that's correct. But I believe the applicant will comply with the landscape standards. He can confirm that.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Does the applicant want to say a few words?
John Spano's applicant, also architect. With me also is Bill Betsel with McDonald's, Craig Eisenberg with the developer.
And your address?
1110 East Missouris, Suite 785, Phoenix 85014.
Thank you.
We have read the package and are in agreement with the stipulations, other than item number four. During our meetings with staff, we were quizzed, and also in our narrative, we represented that the hours of operation were anticipated to be 6 to 11 o'clock. We did not know that that was going to be a stipulation, and we'd like your input on either doing away with that stipulation and see how you...
Do you envision operating 24 hours a day, or do you have your drive-through going to be 24 hours a day?
We're not sure what we're going to need to do to serve the public. Five years from now, it could be 24 hours a day, based upon the demand of the neighborhood. We don't have to come back in for increasing, you know, timeframes and pay another use permit fee for increasing the hours, I guess. I'm not sure of the hours of operation of the Safeway and/or the Jack in the Box. I believe the Jack in the Box is a similar hours, but the drive-through open 24 hours.
Mr. Schmitz.
Chairman Horseman, with respect to the hours of operation of these other facilities, I'm afraid I can't answer that either.
Or...
Give it a minute, though. I might be able to find that.
Question on what's been requested in terms of deletion of the step four.
Of course. We can offer a comment on that. Generally, what we've been doing is, as individual applicants have made their applications and indicated the preferred hours of operation, we have generally taken those and then made them into stipulations. They all have different stipulations, though. I can't say that we have a standard that says they're always going to be 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. You may note in your agenda packet tonight, we have one with hours that differ, goes late as midnight. But I think for our purposes, there was at least a mild concern that even though we don't have any residential in place right now, there is a potential for some residential across the street, although it's a low-to-medium density residential as opposed to straight single-family. And for that reason, we thought that stipulating to the hours of operation would not be a problem until we learned from the applicant that they may want to modify that. Some extension of the hours may be appropriate, or if the commission feels that, given the location, that an hour's restriction is not appropriate, then the stipulation could be dropped.
It's my recollection that I think virtually every use permit has had some statement of hours as a stipulation. What they've been, as you indicated, are varied.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gelsner.
Mr. Schmitz, administratively, for, as the applicant said, five years from now, would they have to come back for another additional special use permit, or would administratively an extension of the hours be granted, or would it be in our best behalf to offer them 24-hour drive-through at this point in time so that the hours of operation would be, you know, 6 to 11 for the restaurant, and 24-hour drive-through whether they choose to exercise that option at this point in time or not?
Chairman Horseman, Commissioner Gelsner, once the hours of operations are stipulated, then they're basically set in the permit. To modify that, you would basically ask for an amendment to the permit or amendment to the stipulation that was placed on the permit, which basically would involve the same process that we're going through today. So, you know, in the interest of flexibility, some modification of the stipulation may be appropriate to avoid going through all of that, just for a minor modification of the hours.
They could give us authority to...
Yes, I could state, this is the first use permit I've been involved with in Goodyear, and I don't doubt that everyone has some sort of limitations, but typically, when there's neighborhood in opposition, then the hours of operation come into play, in my past experience.
You try to be proactive. So, you may find that we may not be on the same page as some other cities and towns.
And I'm just...
We know that a lot of our neighborhoods don't exist yet, and so we're trying to look forward in that regard.
Note taken. I guess we could live without knowing how we're going to serve the public even five years from now. We could, without going back in five years, if we could go 5 to midnight with a 24-hour drive-through, if that could be something that could be entertained. That gives us a little bit of breathing space right now, and then...
5:00 a.m. to midnight and 24 hours on the drive-through?
Correct.
I can live with that. That's fine with me.
And if that changes, then we would have to go through that process.
I can tell you that our experience has been, and some of your competitors have been open for as long as I've been here, and we've not had anybody have to come back in to amend their hours as stipulated in the use permit. So, what they've started out with seems to have worked, and they weren't forced to do that. So, we want to make sure that you're comfortable with it, but at the same time, we like to be able to have some expectations, as well as the new neighbors have expectations as to what the hours of operation are.
I get paid by the hour, but I don't want it. I've got other things I can be doing.
Okay. Other questions?
My question is really for the architects regarding this. Was your thought process, when you did the drawings for this, to make it more subdued, to not, you know, someone at McDonald's is so buoyant with their Ms., obviously, and you made it more subdued? Was that your thought process of...
We wanted to fit in with the center, and I think the colors are basically off of that palette.
Right, right. Okay. And that was my question, because in one sense, being that it is our gateway, I tend to be looking for more extravagant architecture, because of where it's going to be located. But on the same hand, I appreciate the fact that you did your best to not make it so in your face. That's difficult, I see.
And as was stated before, we still have to go through design review.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Broker. On the location of the sign that would just be east of the guard to drive in, what's the size of that sign?
I'm not sure. That's part of the developer's overall sign package, I believe. It's really a monument sign for the center, I believe, and it's under some other separate approval or review.
Is it going to be golden arches, then? My question is, is this a pretty good-sized sign, or...
I'm not sure. I believe it's a center sign. We may have a small piece of that center sign, a panel, if you will.
Okay. All right. So, it's going to be like the one at Safeway, that's between Safeway and the Bank of America, which has...
A line item or a panel.
A line item, sorry. Okay. And are you going to have golden arches other than on the building?
Other than on the building?
Yes.
Just the signage on the building itself?
Okay. There won't be golden arches as such, then? Is that...
Can you refer to another McDonald's that you might be comparing to, I guess, as a separate structure, or is it... No.
Okay. So, will there, on the sign package, be a golden arch?
I am not sure if McDonald's is going to be part of that master sign program. We will have our own individual building-mounted signage, for sure.
I noticed that you have four-sided, you have golden arches, so...
Correct.
What I was getting at was, is there going to be another sign that...
I don't believe we have committed to the center master sign at this time.
All right. Thank you. And then a related question to this document that's on here. We noticed that, right here, just north of the, would be a Panda Express, and it isn't before us today, but I noticed it was on one of the documents, and they're going to enter in... Are they going to enter in through McDonald's and then go into the Panda Express?
There's actually another center drive, driveway cut further north on Estrella Parkway.
I see that. Okay.
And then there's a major north-south center drive also that they would have access from.
All right. Okay. What I was getting at is, these are kind of reversed, and you're going to be able to get into McDonald's off of Estrella Parkway, and you're going to be able to get into Panda Express, and this is maybe a question for the staff. Is there going to be adequate turnage so you can get into the drive-through for Panda Express off of, either through McDonald's or off of the street that's coming off of Estrella Parkway that goes to Panda Express? Looks like quite a turn that would have to be negotiated right about here.
Chairman Horseman, Commissioner Broker, I appreciate your interest in the Panda Express site plan, but I don't think it's going to end up looking like that. So, I wouldn't spend a whole lot of time on it.
We can disregard this kind of document.
They were both submitted at the same time, but you only have the McDonald's in front of you tonight.
Okay.
The other one is still under review and revision.
Okay. And then the last question I have is, I noticed you have two express lanes coming in to, and there's two signs, and are these going to be kind of like merging onto a freeway where you have two lanes coming on, so you'll have one going through, then the other one...
You're not the first one to ask. It's actually controlled at the drive-through, by the drive-through order taker. He will direct them to proceed forward, and then the logic is that that person sitting at the other booth has already been, at the other menu board, has already been sitting there for a while, and he has made up his decision. So, the timeframes for him to move forward also, it speeds up his operation. That one person is doing the ordering, and the other person's sitting there looking at the board, and it really does speed up. But it is controlled camera-wise and by the actual person taking the order.
Okay. So, you actually do speed up the process by having two lanes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone... No one has submitted an interest card. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this case? Now I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 05-300-0007, McDonald's Drive-Thru at Canyon Trails Plaza, with the stated change to stipulation, I believe, four regarding the hours of operation from 5:00 a.m. to midnight and a 24-hour drive-through.
Do we have a second? Have a second for Ms. Gelsner. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the case is recommended for approval. Thank you. Our next case is case 05-300-00011, Parkway Village Use Permits for a Drive-Thru Bank and a Drive-Thru Starbucks. Request approval for a use permit for a drive-through bank and a drive-through Starbucks for Parkway Village, generally located on 1.8 acres on the southwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Roosevelt Street. The applicant is Brad Campbell, and we'll open the public hearing and ask for the staff report.
Chairman Horseman, members of the commission, members of the public, this item is a request for use permit for approval for two drive-throughs located within the Parkway Village commercial development. Parkway Village is located just south of I-10 on the corner of Roosevelt Street and Estrella Parkway. It is located within the city center gateway overlay district and is subject to those regulations. The Walmart is located to the north of the property. The proposed Canyon Trails development is located to the south. Proposed residential is located to the west, and mixed-use development is proposed to the east, buffered by Estrella Parkway. The site includes two lots with a total of 3.78 acres. These lots are located on the northeast corner of the overall Parkway development. Surrounding these lots are proposed shops, buildings, and Caddy Corner is a proposed hotel development. A site plan and elevation was submitted with the package. The Starbucks is proposed to be 3,900 square feet, and the proposed bank would be 4,500 square feet. They've both been designed so that the circulations of both drive-throughs do not adversely affect each other. Bank customers will primarily enter on the east side of the site to gain access to the bank. Starbucks customers will primarily enter on either the north side of the site or the east side of the site. The Starbucks building... The Starbucks building, the Starbucks business is proposing their hours from 5:00 AM to The Starbucks will be flanked by two shops buildings. This is the proposed Starbucks right here. As you can see, they've added major architectural elements to minimize the impact of the drive-through. This is the shops building that will be on the east side of the Starbucks. The menu board will be located on the east side of the building and the drive-through pickup window will be located on the west side of the building underneath that architectural element to minimize the impact. The driveline will be screened by a minimum three-foot screen wall and landscaping. The bank teller windows have been located on the rear of the building. The applicant worked very closely with staff to make this possible. They will be blocked by view from Estrella Parkway. This is the proposed conceptual elevation for the elevation that will face Estrella Parkway. That was not included in your packet. We just received this and we will be working with them on this during the site plan phase, of course, too. The site will be subject to further site plan review to look at the elevations in the site plan. A citizen review meeting took place on March 8th. No citizens attended the meeting and the city has received no other inquiries since that meeting. Staff recommends approval with the four stipulations. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions and the applicant is also available for questions.
Thank you. Questions, Katie?
I'm not sure if this really is for, for staff or for the applicant because it's regarding the way the drive-through is. When you look at this layout compared to this layout, I'm trying to envision how the traffic is flowing. Because when you, when you look at the conceptual drawing, you see, look at this one?
Mm-hmm.
Where the, the car is, is like it's, you know, coming out, it's facing you, coming out. Is this where it's entered?
Yes.
So this is deceiving because you can't tell there are more shops over here. And so that's what I want to.
And when it goes through the site plan process, we can ask for the elevations to be adjusted to make that more clear. But essentially, these two buildings would be connected by the drive-through lane at that point. And so the cars would enter here and then come around the back of this building and then they'd come out here underneath this architectural overhang. And you can see this is the back, so they'd be entering he, oh, can't see that. This is the rear of the building facing Roosevelt, so the cars would be entering at this point, coming around this way and then exiting through here.
Could you show us where, wait, wait, don't.
Okay.
Put that one back. Where is the three-foot screen wall that's going to shield Roosevelt Road? I see the menu boards on the east side of the restaurant as you enter the drive-through and you work your way around and, you know, do 180-degree turn and come to the pickup window. Could you show me where that screening wall is going to be?
The screening wall would be located right here.
Okay.
It's not included on the site plan at this point, but we included it as a stipulation.
So the screening wall would be on the north side of the drive-through and would basically shield the drive-through and shield the?
It would be located right here between the walkway and the drive-through.
Okay, thank you.
This is my next question for the applicant.
Okay. Other questions for staff?
Yeah.
For applicant.
Waiting for the applicant.
Yeah.
Brad Campbell, Retail Development Partners, 7047, East Greenway Parkway, Suite 250, Scottsdale, Arizona.
Thank you.
Matt with the Record Check Architects. Brad?
Yeah.
Had made a request that the hours of operation be not open to 24 hours on the Starbucks.
We would just like the opportunity.
With the hotel.
With the Starbucks operation to reserve the right to operate the business 24 hours a day should the demand be there.
I don't, I don't see an hours limitation in the four stipulations.
Chairman, we did not stipulate that. We didn't think drinking coffee all night would be a problem.
Don't go away. Don't go away. Could you put the elevations up? Matter of fact, the, the shops say south elevation.
I got it, I got it. I know where he's going, so allow me to.
So, so above the drive-through, is that going to be offices or space that's, or is that a fake?
That's a false parapin.
A false parapin?
Yes, that's.
Can I, can I, can I encourage you to think maybe office, you know, unique space? Can we, can we try to do something with that? I mean, I, it looks great, but it's, it's not real functional and, and, you know, and there, there's, somebody may want to rent that because Starbucks is right below it.
If you find me a tenant, I'll put an office up there, have this sound.
No, 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 it doesn't work. You build it and they will come.
Oh, that sounds right. But if only it were that easy.
Well, if you have something unique, somebody's going to want that. I, I, I just think you're, I think, I'm just trying to encourage.
Find your heaviest coffee drinker and just tell him you'll put a straw down through the floor.
I'm sure they will. According to Starbucks stock, there's a lot of them out there. Without actually knowing all the structural components at this point in time, I don't know if it would be feasible. And it's something we have not explored, to be honest with you.
Can I ask you, can I encourage you to explore it? If it, if it could be done, I think you would have some, one of the things that we want to do in the city center is have mixed-use development. And this is, and while this is mixed-use, there, there's an opportunity here for some unique office buildings or other, you've done some really nice architectural work and I'm not, I'm not denying that. As a matter of fact, I'm encouraging it and I'm very pleased with it.
Thank you.
However, I would like to see you put it to better use than just looking pretty.
Again, yes. To answer your question, we will consider it. You guys are obviously familiar with the Parkway Village project. We'd have to refer back to the CCNRs. There are currently being, I believe, 55,000 square feet of office space being constructed and will come up before this board on that project. So I don't know if we may be restricted, and I think we are, but I will definitively say that, but I think we may be restricted on our particular parcels for office use.
Well, it could be retail boutique. I mean, it could be very specialized.
Okay. Yes, we will consider it. Okay. We're on Dancing, we're on Dancing here.
Give some retail office up there.
We will look into it, yes.
God, make it, make it nice.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. That was hard, guys.
Ms. Hasbro?
Well, you had great out-of-the-box thought here and, and I think he was, was going with that regarding that. My concern, and I do love the architecture, I think that it's inventive and something we don't see around here. But I will say that I do kind of go on the worry of the pedestrian traffic flow in front of these two entry and exit ways. And, and I don't know where else you have this type of concept that we can see, no, we've only, there's only been, you know, five pedestrians hit and one killed, so we don't, you know, I don't really truly know what kind of safety issues are involved here. And we're talking Starbucks. We're not talking about, you know, this is a, and now you're talking maybe 24 hours. So this is obviously going to be really a used area. So, help me out here.
Is there a question in there?
Yeah, tell me about what kind of, if this has been done before and the issues, if any, have come up from that, safety-wise, traffic-wise, pedestrian-wise.
In this municipality, obviously not. In Phoenix, I am not aware of this particular layout. I moved here from Florida several years ago and this has been, I guess, put on several different properties in order to, I guess, conform to council or board's request. One of the requests we received is that we put the retail up against the roadway and creating this pedestrian and the ambiance of the city desire. And we felt, you know, that Starbucks is a key component to that, to the vitality of our center that we'd like to, you know, build here and the overall project in general. And in keeping with the theme, you know, I'm no rocket scientist. I obviously, I haven't had original thought in years, so this came from, you know, actually in Tampa, Florida, to be honest with you. And maybe, there hasn't been any, you know, incidents that I'm aware of, but I'm, I'm a real person and I just saw a guy turn, you know, run a red light on the way here and I'm, so, you know, anything's possible. You know, caution's always there. There'll be ample signage. Sidewalks are clearly marked. They're wide. I mean, I believe they're about 15 feet between the building and, so, you know, there's plenty of viewing space as far as, you know, automobiles coming out and being able to have a peripheral view of any pedestrian traffic that might be, you know, there. And it's no different than anybody else, you know, charity.
Well, maybe, maybe something that could be placed there, signage-wise.
There will be signs, crosswalks and it'll be marked clearly.
Well, stating that, you know, this is a drive-through, my level, that appreciates.
Okay, sure. I mean, that's kind of makes sense.
Ms. Lorton?
I actually have pretty much the same comment. I was looking at that going, ooh, there's two chances, basically, to get the pedestrians as you come around. I was wondering specifically if a stop sign, and I can't, can't top of this drawing, would be at the, after they get their coffee? Because, you know, when people are getting their Starbucks coffee, they're just not paying attention, they're, you know, so maybe.
For the highlights of my day.
I know. So if there was a stop sign thing after they picked up their coffee before, something to draw their attention, like for the motorists rather than the pedestrians.
If something we could obviously put into the.
Speed bump or I don't know, what does the?
All those, all those factors are something that would obviously be easily implemented as a plan.
Do we need to stipulate this thing or?
Without objection. I don't, it's, it's not a problem for us.
Yeah, I, I don't know which is the best traffic control device, but I pretty much had the same thing. I like the fact it's in there and it looks really nice in there, but if there can just be some.
That would not be a problem for us.
And I, I do like your false front, but I personally don't think I would want a office above the drive-through 24 hours.
I'll look into it, I promise.
You might go back with a boutique, I agree with that.
Other questions for the applicant? Any other remarks that you'd like to leave with us?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any interest cards. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding this case? Now I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of case 05-300-00011, use permit for Starbucks drive-through and bank drive-through with the four stipulations. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second? I have a second for Mr., excuse me, Mr. Bay. Mr. Bay. I'm choking on that. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion's passed. Our next case is case 05-300-0008, El Pollo Loco Use Permit, a request for the approval of a use permit for El Pollo Loco, a drive-through restaurant generally located on 0.91 acres on the south side of McDowell Road, 700 feet east of Cornerstone Boulevard in the Palm Valley Cornerstone Shopping Center. The applicant is WKS Restaurant Corporation. Open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As previously mentioned, the applicant is requesting a use permit for convenience use to allow for the development of an El Pollo Loco restaurant with a drive-up window. The subject property highlighted in red on this exhibit is located on the south side of McDowell Road. Lot 15 is highlighted in yellow and the proposed El Pollo Loco property is located on the northwest quadrant of this parcel. This exhibit may give you a better idea of where the site is located. Again, this is lot 15. Within lot 15, the applicant is proposing to subdivide a parcel in order to develop a fast-food restaurant, El Pollo Loco, located just to the north of the property or single-family residences. Farther to the east is the future Buffalo Wild Wings restaurant and then just to the southeast would be the Manuel's Mexican restaurant. J.C. Penney's is located farther to the south. This is the conceptual site plan that the, that the applicant has submitted for staff review, which calls for a 2,884-square-foot restaurant to be located on an unplanted 0.92-acre parcel. As you can see, the front of the building faces McDowell Road and customers that utilize the drive-through will, will order from a menu board and squawk box that faces McDowell Road and then proceed to the west side of the restaurant to pay for and pick up their As you may have seen in the staff report, the City of Goodyear zoning ordinance provides that convenience uses must not be materially detrimental to persons residing or working in the vicinity adjacent to the property, to the neighborhood or to the public welfare. In addition, the proposed use must also be reasonably compatible with uses permitted in the surrounding area. According to the zoning ordinance, the burden of proof satisfying these requirements rests with the applicant. Staff has reviewed the proposed use and its attendant site plan and based on the finding that petition fails, that the petition fails to meet these requirements, cannot support a use permit application at this time. Staff has found a number of deficiencies with the use permit submittal. According to the conceptual site plan, the menu board faces McDowell Road. The menu board would be located right there. And the applicant is proposing a drive-through lane that would stack vehicles in front of the building, an orientation that is incompatible with the city's design guidelines. Finally, the applicant is proposing a squawk box in front of the restaurant, which staff believes could be audible from the yards of single-family residences across McDowell Road located right here. It should also be noted that lot 15, according to the Palm Valley Cornerstone Master conceptual site plan, or rather, master site plan, was not originally contemplated to have a drive-through business. Staff recognizes that the master site plan is subject to change and is attempting to work with the applicant regarding site design and how to coordinate the development of two retail shop buildings with the El Pollo Loco restaurant. I'd now like to show you an exhibit of how the developer plans to develop lot 15 within Palm Valley Cornerstone. Again, this is the Palm, excuse me, the El Pollo Loco and these are two retail shop Staff has suggested moving the restaurant to the east side of lot 15 and then shifting one of the shop buildings to the west side of the site, which would allow the applicant to locate the drive-through stacking lanes and menu board and squawk box behind the building and farther from the adjacent residences. So essentially, staff is recommending that the El Pollo Loco restaurant be flipped and then shifted over to the right so that the drive-through stacking will occur to the rear and side of the restaurant and so that the menu board and squawk box can be located on the south side of the restaurant away from the residential uses across the street. This is just an example of one way the applicant could successfully meet the requirements of the city's ordinance, zoning ordinance and design guidelines. This shows the shifting of the El Pollo Loco to the right and the flipping of the restaurant so that stacking could start back here and then proceed to the right of the restaurant. It also shows a shifting of one of the shops to the west side of the site. There's actually other opportunities for the developer to orient the site. They could also, for instance, move building C directly to the east of building B and then have some type of plaza connection between the two buildings and thereby moving most of the parking behind all three buildings. Staff has discussed this issue with Suncor and they are agreeable to this change of location for the El Pollo Loco. location for the El Pollo Loco restaurant. However, the applicant has been unwilling to work with staff on a new site design for lot 15. Essentially, the deficiencies that I've pointed out tonight have been self-created by the applicant. Even though staff cannot recommend approval of the specific proposal as submitted, staff recognizes that the applicant has taken some measures to mitigate the impact of the use on adjacent properties. To mitigate the visual impact of the stacked vehicles and menu board, the applicant is proposing a four-and-a-half-foot-high screen wall between the drive-through lane and McDowell Road at this location right here. The applicant is also proposing to lower the height of the drive-through lane by 1.8 feet, which should help to reduce the visibility of the menu board and squawk box and stacked vehicles. A citizen review meeting was held on February 22, 2006. One resident attended who lived just north of the site and voiced concerns with proposed menu board and squawk box locations, which are located on the north side of the building and across from single-family residences on McDowell Road. In conclusion, staff cannot support the El Pollo Loco use permit at this time. However, if the commission wishes to recommend approval, staff requests that the approval be subject to the stipulations as written on page one of the staff report. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions you may have, and I believe the applicant would also like to make a presentation tonight.
Questions of staff? Yes, Mr. Gelscher.
On parcel 15, is Suncor developing that, or is it the restaurant, somebody else has bought parcel 15 and is developing all three parcels? How is this all working? Or has the parcel been subdivided and the restaurant owns...
Chairman Horstman and Commissioner Gelscher, the property currently is owned by Suncor, and they are selling the property to Glimshire. And Glimshire intends to subdivide the site, parse it out into three parcels, and then develop it into two shops buildings, and then one fast-food restaurant building.
Great. Answered my question. Thank you.
Mr. Lortano.
Yes, with regard to the, two of the stipulations that you said you'd be interested in, number four, having a touchpad ordering system rather than a squawk box, I assume that's a silent thing, like a bank thing.
That's correct.
Now, with something like that, were they amenable to that as well? Were they okay with switching that?
Staff, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Lortano, staff has not specifically discussed that proposal since writing the staff report and adding that stipulation.
Because I would assume that's one of the neighbors' complaints, would be they wouldn't want to hear the ordering at 10 o'clock, which I can understand at night. And then the other one was, yeah, I think that's the only one I had at this point for that. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Just wanted to come up with that.
Mr. Bay.
If you don't mind, could you kind of explain to me how flipping that site changes the configuration or the operation? It simply shifts it. The way I see it, it only shifts it to the other side, does not change the way it's configured.
Please bear with me for just one moment while I find that exhibit. What staff is suggesting, basically, maybe it's easier to look at it this way. This is the original, or this is their current proposal. Staff is basically asking them to shift this building to the east side of the site and then flipping it from left to right, which would then allow them to stack the vehicles, even though it's not shown correctly on this new exhibit that I created. It would allow them to place the menu board behind the restaurant and a squawk box to the rear of the restaurant, and then stack the vehicles from back here. They could pick up their order from a window here and then just proceed across the north side of the restaurant out of the site. I also want to show you the McDonald's exhibit one more time, which went earlier tonight. If you envision a stray of Parkway as McDowell Road, vehicles could basically proceed east, if they were traveling from the west, proceed east, and then turn at this access point, which basically would replicate the access points to the east of the El Pollo Loco, and then either enter the site here, this would have to be discussed with engineering, or then proceed south and then west and then into the drive-through lanes. This proves that it can work, a site design or a site location for a drive-through restaurant next to an access point could work, as staff is proposing.
So, here's my question. Are we here to talk about a use permit or a site design? I guess I'm a little confused because we've had two other cases earlier, and the question was whether or not they were compatible uses for this particular, for their sites. And now the question is, is whether or not we should determine how facilities are configured on the plan, which I thought was really staff's responsibility.
Well, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Bay, even though this is a request for a use permit, design considerations should be taken into account. If the applicant can't design a site plan at this stage, that meets their requirements, how can they meet the requirements at a later stage? That's what we're concerned about.
So do you feel that the stipulations as proposed here would mitigate the concerns that you have?
Staff, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, staff is recommending denial of this application, but if the commission believes that the applicant has successfully addressed requirements of the zoning ordinance and design guidelines, these are just stipulations that we would like added.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Dustin Jones with Snell &amp; Wilmer on behalf of the applicant, WKS Restaurants, that is submitting an application for a use permit for the El Pollo Loco restaurant. With me tonight is Karen Keith, also with Snell &amp; Wilmer. Also have Jay Sponberg, who is with me to my left, who is the actual developer of the restaurant. Also present this evening is the architect, who's done a lot of the extensive work on the design of the site plan. That's Mark Taylor with Archicon. And then also with us is John Schottenstein, who's to my rear, who is with Glimshire Ventures, which is the other partner involved in this particular site, lot 15. It's very rare, obviously, that we come before you with a recommendation of denial, and it's unfortunate that it actually had to come to this. That was not our intention. We actually wanted to work with staff, and we worked with staff at great lengths over the past few months to get the site planned to a degree that staff would be comfortable that once the use permit was approved, that the site would be developed in accordance with the standards of the city. What I'd like to do for the first few minutes here is I'd like to go through the standards that the city has, which are the design guidelines and the ordinances that have been adopted. And what happened in our discussions with staff is there was essentially a breakdown in communication interpretation of these standards that the city needs to employ. I would respect the request that you bear with me as you go through these particular As staff has so eloquently articulated, the standard for a use permit within the City of Goodyear requires that the use permit not be granted if it will materially be detrimental to a person's residence or working in the vicinity adjacent to the property. Obviously, the operative terms here are materially detrimental, detrimental to anyone that's within proximity of the site. The other standard, obviously, that has been articulated by staff as well, is the fact that it must be reasonably compatible with other uses within the site. On both of these two elements, we believe we've met the standard, that the adjacent property owners are not going to be materially harmed by the location of a use permit, nor will this be an unreasonably compatible use within this power center that is Palm Valley Shopping Center. And obviously, the burden is on us as the applicant to present our case, make our case, and we made our case at the staff level, and we're having, again, questions with the interpretations of these standards and felt we needed to come before the commission. Convenience uses within the city also have a certain standard. And when you go through these, the convenience uses, which are uses that typically have drive-throughs or things that staff and council have decided need a second look, the zoning ordinance goes through these types of uses and sets a standard, basically, for what types of cases should come before you. And as you can see, these are all types of scenarios where you're dealing with hours of operation, the size of the property, rights of way, dealing with traffic mitigation measures, all of these things that are serious considerations and things that we've addressed with staff as well on our applications before you. Once you've gone beyond the zoning ordinance, the next document that you must pick up to discuss your application with staff is the design guidelines, are the design guidelines. And the design guidelines also articulate various standards that set forth use, site organization, and building elevations within the City of Goodyear. And going through these design guidelines, we've gone through and we've met every single one of these items that are very, very clear with respect to the site organization for this site for the proposed El Pollo Loco drive-through. And here, as you can see, as enumerated here in the site organizations, primarily focusing on the drive-through aisles, where they're located within the site, pedestrian walkways, and all of the circulation types of elements on the application. Design guidelines also go into discussion of building design. If I can take a second and focus your attention on item number F, which is in the design guidelines, that notes that menu board speakers should be located to protect adjoining residential areas from excessive noise. That is the standard in the design guidelines with respect to the sound of a speaker box, affectionately called a squawk box by some, protecting the residents within the area. Obviously, when the city council and the planning commission went through the discussions for the design guidelines, there could have been a prohibition altogether of having speakers on or near residences, and that was not the case. The design guidelines give flexibility, flexibility for the developer to mitigate their impact. And this standard here, again, states that the menu board speakers should be located to protect the residents. And that's a policy statement that we feel like we've complied with, and I will make that case a little more strongly in a few minutes here. After you've left the zoning ordinance and then the design guidelines, you must also look to the sign ordinance within the city that addresses the menu boards. And with the menu board, as staff has also articulated, the sign ordinance allows for one menu board on the site and one preview board, which is obviously the one that you pull up to and look at first, but doesn't have a speaker on it. It also dictates that signs, these menu boards, shall be located a minimum of 45 feet from the street property line. If staff, if the council, wanted to prohibit the signs from being on the street, they would have prohibited them. They did not do that. The standard is they must be 45 feet away from the street in order for them to be approved. And then also, then the other standard is that the front of the boards shall not be visible from the public street. I've often heard staff say that the boards are prohibited. They are not prohibited. They're prohibited from being visible. That is the standard that needs to be applied to this case, is their visibility, and their distance within 45 feet, amongst some other things. And then obviously, the amount of space and the size of the boards. This is all straight from the sign ordinance that the city has adopted, and we do have the sign Nazi affectionately known as Karen Keith as well in the audience, who's clarified this for me numerous times over the past week. So I want to now get into our site plan for this project. As staff has shown you the site, the EPL site is the proposed drive-through on the site, and I'm representing, again, WKS Restaurants that's trying to develop that site within this lot 15. And you can see the proposed circulation there on the site. We can dial in a little closer and show the site with a little more color. You can see within the circulation of the site, the cars do arrive at the aisle, order on the front, the, I don't have a pointer or anything with me right now, but the menu board has been talked about, and it's right on the front. I can't, you can't see on your screen, but the menu board is right there on the front of the building. And on the outside, there is an outdoor patio area along there. The vehicles then come in and then exit through the shop, through the center that way. I've also provided some building elevations that we are certain meet the intent and desire of the design guidelines for the center. They also meet the design guidelines for Palm Valley. Suncor has approved these as well. And then this will show you the landscape plan that has been provided to staff as well that shows a very, very extensive and enhanced landscape package along the road, along McDowell Road, that would be a buffer to the site. Now, staff's concerns, the four-page staff report that you've received can be summarized in a few bullet points here, as staff has indicated today for the public, that they find that there are deficiencies due to self-imposed site constraints on the site, and we differ with them on that deficiency, that the menu board's location and visibility. Staff would suggest that menu boards cannot be on McDowell Road, and that's not the standard within the City of Goodyear. It's the visibility and location that's more of an issue. Then also, calling the menu or the speaker box a squawk box also is something that was stated in your staff report, as well as the noise potentially from idling vehicles and the presence along the street frontage. At the initiation of this process, the applicant submitted their application and received comments back from the staff. On January 10th, the applicant received these staff comments, fully articulating all of the city's position. This was one of the bullet points, one of the items that was in that staff, that initial review letter, that stated that please contact staff regarding the proposed menu and speaker board location. At this time, there was no discussion, nor was the applicant ever told that the menu board could not be along McDowell Road. And the applicant proceeded with the process and moved forward to the neighborhood meeting. Also in this same letter, there was a specific quote from the zoning ordinance that said the drive-through restaurants, that the drive-through restaurant is permitted to have one menu board, again, just articulating the standard and saying that it needs to be 45 feet from the street. The applicant complied with that and actually exceeded that in many respects. It wasn't until very late in the review process that the applicant got some resistance from staff with respect to the location of that site. I want to walk you through the site to show you some of the things that the applicant has done to mitigate its impact and to mitigate any of the concerns that staff has. As you can see here with this illustration, the menu board is 55 feet from the property line. That's 55 feet back from the road. The applicant is also taking upon itself to recess the grade of the drive-through aisle, 1.8 feet. So as you approach the drive-through, it just goes down just a little bit, so again, allowing for the vehicles to come down a bit and not be as visible from the street, and also mitigating the impact of the menu board. The screen wall that's out on the front that screens the site has also been elevated 1.6, or one foot six inches, to screen the menu board, making it so that no one's going to be able to see the menu board. That's the standard. It cannot be visible from the street. And then one of the other things that the applicant has done and submitted this to staff is that if you note the screen wall, how it meanders across the front of McDowell Road, one of the comments, again, late in the day that the applicant received with respect to the visibility of the sign, was, "Yeah, you can do what you want along McDowell Road, but cars coming east and west along McDowell Road are still going to be able to see the sign." So the applicant included a return on the end of that screen wall, at the very end there, that would also block the visibility of the sign. Again, additional steps to mitigate the visibility of the sign along the street. I should note that the distance between this menu board and any residence is about 205 feet, and as you know, the ride-of-way that the city requires that a developer set aside when a freeway is coming through is 300 feet, or two-thirds of that distance from any residence. The street in front, so you have the 55 feet, which is from the menu board to the ride-of-way. The ride-of-way is 130 feet, 130 feet to the ride-of-way, from the edge of McDowell sidewalk all the way to the other side. And then you have another 20 feet or so sent back from the ride-of-way to where the homes are, and you have their backyards and their walls. What this illustration also tells you, in addition to the distance that is between the residences and the menu board, is all of the landscaping and all the other structures that are in between, the wall, the landscaping, the landscaping that's out on McDowell Road, the median that's there, and the landscaping, and then the wall, and then the person's home on the other side of the street. So from our perspective, many, many steps have been addressed, many, many steps have been taken to address the concerns of any residents that could potentially hear the menu board. I would submit that they're not going to hear the menu board. Here is another illustration that shows if an individual is standing on the north side of the street and looking south across the street to the... of the street and looking south across the street to the building, this is the site, this is the illustration that shows that the menu board will not be seen. It will not even be seen, if at all, by any of the vehicles driving on McDowell Road because of the mitigating measures to screen it and buffer it from view. And this is also the illustration, the one I just had on the screen, is the one that's noted in the staff report that they, that was sealed and signed, that they would require that we be, if the commission decides to approve this tonight, we'd be required to develop to that standard which shows the sightlines with the board being completely concealed. Now, one of the other concerns obviously that the residents and staff has had is the sound of the board. What are people going to be hearing on this site? We have had some sound technicians look into this, and we have facts to present to you. The drive-through speaker is set at an 80 decibel level max. That's if it was set at its lowest. And that's right where the cars are when they're right up next to, next to the speaker box. And as logic would tell you, the laws of physics would suggest that as you move away from the board, the sound is going to drop. It's going to be dropped considerably. 10 feet away from the board, the sound will drop to 74 decibels. And then what we've done on this illustration is to tell you what those decibel levels equate to. And we did some research, went across the internet, looked at a variety of different websites that will give you a decibel level, and what does that decibel level mean in real terms, in layman's terms? And so that's what's illustrated on the right of the screen there. So 10 feet away, 74 decibel levels, you're looking at 80 to 70 decibel levels. That's the curbside vacuum cleaner sound. No one wants to be next to that in their backyard. But as you move away, 40 feet, it drops again to 62 decibel levels, and that's regular conversation unless you're a member of the Jones family. And then if you go even a little farther back, at 160 feet away from the site, it drops to 50 decibel levels, and that's just your average ambient noise within your home or quiet library. Now, I remind you again, this is at 160. At 205 feet away, the audibility of the menu of the, of the speaker box is minimal. Now, this also, this illustration does not take into consideration all of the structures and objects that would be in the middle, the walls, the trees, the vehicles that are already going to be driving on McDowell Road. Now, staff has submitted, suggested that a revised site plan be taken into consideration. We have not seen this rendition that staff presented tonight, but they had talked about flipping the building. So we had our architect go to work to talk about how they could redesign the site so that it would work for us. And if I could take a second, Eddie, if I could first focus on the site plan on Elmo I'm going to put down here that staff presented. So McDowell Road is to the north, again flipping the building or kicking the building from here, flip-flopping it and locating the drive-up window here. Now, staff has suggested that our site plan had some deficiencies. This is the first time I've seen this site plan, but I can note some deficiencies already. On this site plan that would be proposed by staff, and we haven't even talked amongst ourselves, I'm just looking at this initial reaction. On this site here, people are coming in, there's a, there's a curb cut right here on McDowell Road. They have to come in here and presumably flip a right-hand U-turn to get onto the site. And the menu board's here, so I can anticipate cars coming around the corner queuing, going out towards McDowell Road. Or if they come in this way, on this drive aisle, coming in here, this and many applications that I've seen before, the city is not considered queuing space because you're in the middle of the driveway. This is the drive aisle for the access to the site. So I'm looking at this site, and I can't see how this works with vehicles queuing here. Another issue is you put the menu board here, you've got people coming up trying to order their, their chicken sniffing garbage next to it. I see some considerable deficiencies, for lack of a better word, with this site plan as well. If I can have the PowerPoint brought back up, and I'll show you the site plan that we worked on this as well, and this was one of those potentially that could have been approved. But this site plan as well, again, has deficiencies by flipping it to this other side. Menu board located there. Again, on this site plan, we couldn't figure out, if you flip it, where do you put the garbage can? And again, the trash enclosure is going to be right there next to the menu board. And like the site plan that staff has submitted, that's not the ideal situation when you're ordering food. It's not something the restaurant wants to be involved in. Also, with this circulation consistent with what staff has proposed here, if you flip it, you have the cars coming out there, and you have potential for conflicting traffic patterns, which are coming in and out of the restaurant and coming in and out of the drive right there. We feel this is deficient as well. One of the other things I already noted was the U-turn, and that's not an ideal situation, one that we could work with. Obviously, it looked like the McDonald's was going to work with that, but from our perspective, that does not work in, in concert with all the other things that are going on in the site. The issues really come down to function versus aesthetics. Staff's comments and staff's objection to the site is because they feel like the aesthetics of having the menu board or the sound of the menu board on the street is going to be detrimental to the neighbors and is not reasonably compatible with the surrounding uses. As I've argued this evening, that is not our position. We feel it really is something quite different. If you look at our original site that's been submitted to you, the menu board has been screened as required by the ordinance, that it not be visible from the street, that there's a wall that's there, there has been substantial landscaping provided for it, and there is a depressed drive-through lane that would mitigate the impact. On a revised site plan that we looked at, not even the one that was submitted to you this evening, the location of the site, a location of the menu board is not appropriate. On the original site that's been submitted to you, you can see that the, that there is adequate parking. If we were to revise the site plan, and I don't know if staff considered this, there were approximately, I believe it was 11 parking spaces that were lost in, on this site by flipping it the other direction and putting the two retail pads on the site. With the original site as submitted, it parks, it meets the standards the city requires and actually exceeds them. And the circulation works with the other site, with the cars going through, with all the landscaping and mitigation on the street, circulation works and you're not putting pedestrians and people in that situation. And I know that parking and circulation within the site has been an issue for the city. The architecture's not going to change. The architecture's going to meet the standards that the city has regardless of where the building is located. The site that, that is before you as our submittal is the site that SunCore reviewed, and it's the site that SunCore approved. SunCore has not seen any other site unless staff has provided this one to them prior to this evening. They've not seen another site. I can tell you that Karen Keith had discussions with them today about this very issue, and they are of the, of the position that the site that they saw is the one that they have approved. Now, if staff wants to suggest something else, obviously they would look at that, but what's before you today as our submittal, our application, met their standard. It works for them, works within the center, and they're pleased with all the architectural and design that has been put into the site. And again, the other deficiency with the revised site plan, both on the one that we provide that's revised and the one that staff has provided this evening, is the location of the trash enclosures. We have gone through and reviewed all of the stipulations that would be proposed in the event that this commission decides to recommend an approval of the city council and sees that we've met all of the, we've met the standard for use from it, that we've mitigated the impact, that we've screened the menu board as required. Those stipulations, we would need to make some modifications to those because there are obviously some there that do not work for us, particularly the touchscreen element, which hasn't been seen in the city and was actually quite a bit of a surprise just when we saw that in the stipulation, as staff has indicated the day we hadn't been told about that. And quite confused as to how that would work. You just would drive up and punch and move on. I'm assuming it's been done in other communities, but it wasn't something that was proposed to us, and it's not our best-case scenario. So if staff or if this commission would entertain a recommendation of approval to the city council, we would at that time talk to you about some of the suggested changes to the language and the stipulations that were proposed. Again, Dustin Jones with Snoll and Warner. If you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer those at this time.
Questions?
Can I just add one comment to what Dustin said?
Sure.
I'd like to go back to the site plan. Elmo, please. Staff certainly is not suggesting having a dumpster at this location. What staff is suggesting is basically creating a drive-through lane that would begin here. And I can more easily show it on the site plan that you recommended approval for earlier this evening, McDonald's. Staff is suggesting that vehicles that enter Palm Valley Cornerstone proceed through this access point south, then west, and then east to the menu board location, and then across the east side of the restaurant. I don't believe that the applicant tonight has demonstrated that they cannot design something like this. And so staff only wants to work with the applicant to come up with a better design for the site plan. And that's why we're recommending denial of this project tonight. We believe that a different design is possible.
Thank you. Mr. Lortano.
Yes, Mr. Jones, could you put up the one PowerPoint? It was a colored one. It was earlier in your presentation with regard to the drive-through. I think it highlights. If you can get back to that one.
This is the zoomed-in version of the entire site?
Not entire, it's a colored one, an artist's rendering. It had the drive-through.
I have this one here, and then I have a larger one that shows the street as well.
Just, just one.
He brought you back to the.
Oh, there you go. Oh, he's got it on Elmo.
Yeah, I think we'll just use Elmo at this point. I have the slides in, in hard copy as well.
Okay.
So you can go back to Elmo.
Well, I had a question with how you have this laid out. Rather than flipping the whole thing, could you just reverse your drive-through on this scene? I mean, would that be something that would be possible? Because it also keeps your traffic from backing up right in front of your patio, because it appears that's probably not the best part to sit with a bunch of traffic sitting up for your patrons as well. Rather than move this to the other side of the location, could you just change the drive-through and make it go the other direction?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lortano, without confirming with the architect.
The cars must rotate in counterclockwise direction. The driver's window on the left.
If you flip-flop the drive, then you're coming up and your passengers having to reach out to get your friend.
Oh, that's better.
So it would be on, it would be on the right side of the car, and that's not, not.
Because my concern with this, with the way the traffic flows, this is, you were talking about backing up the other one, and that's why I wanted to see this one again. It looks like if you do have where your menu board is on McDowell, this is McDowell up here, right?
On the north side.
Yeah, that you, if you get several customers, you're going to back up and you're going to block the parking space in here as they go on out where your little cars starting to come in. If you've got several cars waiting, you're going to back up into your parking lot. I guess that would be one of my concerns with your flow there, you know?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lortano, this site plan here meets all the queuing requirements that the city, the design guideline suggests. This provides adequate space for the cars to queue along this area here, and few cars will be out on this one. Again, the site plan that staff had had the building and had the queuing kind of going out quite a bit farther than would be our preference.
And then the other question was about the touch tone. I thought your, it was very interesting with the sound decibels and everything with regard to that. That was very informative because it is hard to tell how much, you know, when you're there, it sounds rather loud. Is that a technology you are, I've never seen it in the valley other than banks and, you know, along those lines. But the touch tone screen, is that something that you'd be totally opposed to, or would you be willing to look into something like that?
We would be totally opposed to.
Is it a cost? I don't know how much those run. Is it more of a cost measure possibly?
Do you want to speak to the touchscreen?
Seems like you get a more accurate order than yelling at someone in a.
Jay's sponsored with WKS Restaurants will speak for that.
In regards to the touchscreen, we have not looked into that, and we think it'd be too difficult operationally to have a touchscreen system in place. What we have looked into is what is called an order confirmation unit, where the order would be displayed as the customer would be reciting their order and would opt for a lower speaker volume or actual elimination of the speaker volume during the late night hours and still allow us to conduct operations efficiently.
So rather than reading back the order, it would just appear like.
Right. Exactly, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
One of the, Mr. Chairman, one of the considerations that Jay has offered is that if staff, if commission would recommend approval of the city council, we would stipulate that during the late hours of operations, after nine o'clock, that the speaker box would be muted, and people would drive up, and there would be a nice courtesy message on the screen that says that the patrons, if they would please just state their order, we're trying to respect the neighbors in the community, state their order, and then again, the order would just pop back up on the screen, and then you'd obviously have everything on the text on there, and they would order and move on. That would be one of the things that, again, the applicant would offer if that's something that the commission would so desire. Again, stipulating to have the box muted in the evenings, noting that during the daytime hours, there's going to be enough traffic and noise, and other ambient noise within the community along McDowell Road, that the noise is not going to be heard.
Other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Jones. I have two parts from folks that would like to comment.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ken Porter, 13360 West Almeria Road in Goodyear. I'd like to kind of set up a scenario for you if, for a neighbor whose house borders or is up against a McDowell Road, but it gets to be 10 o'clock in the evening, if you have children, they're in bed, it's, you know, things are winding down, you go out on your patio, weather's cooling down, you would just kind of like to have a few minutes to enjoy being outside, and, and what do you get? Nobody pays. You know, nobody wants that for their, for their homes. And, and I think that we have a, we have a reasonable, friendly neighborhood that is fully embraced, the center across the street. And, and this one case, it just seems like there is a simple change that can be made, and that's to move the menu board and the, and the speaker box to the south side of the restaurant, just get it as far away from the restaurants as possible. I, I saw the presentations, and it was, a lot of questions were brought up about the orientation, whether it could work or not. But what popped into my head, and I guess it exposes me as a fast-food junkie, but Carl's Jr., the speaker, the menu board and the speaker box are out in the back of the store, next to the garbage dumpsters. It, it seems to work. Wendy's, the speaker box and menu board are in the back, away from Lishfield Road, and right next to the garbage dumpsters. I mean, and, and that's not an issue, I don't believe. So I think the site plan could work, it could be developed, it would work, it would, and, and that's all we're really asking, is just to get it moved to the south side of the building. I always had a problem with, when I was on council, I had a problem with stipulations where for, well, we're going to mask things with landscaping, or we're going to, we're going to, we're going to limit it to an 80-decibel box. And, you know, and these people have the right intentions, and I don't doubt their intentions, but they're not always going to be on the project. And we've all seen storms move through the areas in the summer times on, on these projects, and trees blow down, and landscaping blows down, and it inevitably rarely gets replaced. It's just left, or, or it gets replaced with some, you know, low-lying type of shrub, which is more low maintenance. But, so I've always seen a weakness with landscaping as being not really a long-term solution to problems. And on a speaker, even if they were to mute, get a muted speaker, in five years, when these gentlemen are on to another project, and somebody else is there, and the speaker breaks, you know, they're going to be going down the list in the catalog looking for the most, for the cheapest speaker, producing the best volume for them, for their customers. And, and we've lost what we thought we gained here through this process. So I, I would ask, please, please be careful of mitigating types of factors because many times it just will not, they can't be maintained into the future. I'd like to also address the, the sound issue. You know, I, nobody can dispute that if you're in a quiet area and you do a sound testing, that sound does, because of the way it propagates, does the volume is reduced and the decibel's reduced as you get further away. But in an, in an area, there's a lot of other factors that affect sound, and one is wind, and that blows sound. And in our neighborhood, that's obvious that in the summertime, when the prevailing wind comes from the southwest, we hear freeway traffic much more than we do if the wind is coming from the north. And so in the way this restaurant's, the prevailing wind would just tend to carry, and I have no scientific study to say how much, but would tend to carry sound a little more if it was coming out of the southwest. So just, just the sound data by itself doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, if I'm in my backyard, I'm not going to be able to hear the speaker because it's 250 feet away from me. Other circumstances affect that. I think that's, oh, I wanted to address sign ordinance. Mr. Jones mentioned on the sign ordinance of what he thought the intended council was when they, when they adopted it, and, and I was on the council when we adopted at least some form of the, of the sign ordinance. And I recall talking about menu boards, and we never wanted to, to just do a flat outright ban of any menu board that was, that'd be adjacent to residence. The idea was let's be flexible, and let's, let the situation determine what would be best and not make it one-size-fits-all for the city. And so it wasn't written to make a ban, it could have been, but that was never the intention of, of the city to, to be that inflexible. And in this case, it just seems, you couldn't, you couldn't get that menu board closer to the residents than the current plan, and it certainly could be changed to be more conducive to the neighborhood. Thank you for, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Tricia Sadel.
Good evening, Commissioner and members of the commission. My name's Tricia Sadel. I live at 13405 West Almeria Road. Echo many of Ken's comments. Under my little grassroots approach, managed to collect some signatures from the neighborhood supporting moving the menu board in the squawk box to the south side of the building, again, to minimize the disruptions in the neighborhood and to allow us to enjoy our backyards. Just some commentary from Mr. Jones' presentation. At the citizens' review meeting, I think it was February 22nd, is that right, David? February 22nd. I had raised the question of the decibel level and this was the first time that I actually saw any of the comparisons to how, how loud the decibels would be and what that means in comparison to everyday noise. So I think it would have been helpful to have that information suit rather than at this meeting. Echoing Ken's comments, you know, we can't do anything about what happens five years from now with the squawk box or the sound, the volume of the squawk box or if the squawk box breaks, et cetera. So by attempting to move this menu board in the squawk box to the south side of the building, we feel as though it would mitigate any future issues and still allow the residents to enjoy their backyard. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission on this issue? Is there any questions for staff?
I'd like to address the applicant again, if that's possible.
Sure.
The question I have is, it looks as though there's been real extensive measures to try to mitigate the negative aspects of having a menu board on the north side of the building. That's the excavation of the driveway, the additional walls, lots of foliage and, and even an additional apron on the wall to mitigate the light spillage out into traffic. And to me, that all seems like it seems to come to some sort of a cost. My question is quite frankly, is it, is it possible to consider the relocation of that menu board? And is that a, is that something doable?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I've asked Mark Taylor, the architect, to address this because I know that over the past few weeks, there have been many attempts, many versions, many opportunities trying to mitigate the impact and move the building around and been very inconclusive.
Oh, and before you answer, there's one other question too. Also, there was some consideration about flipping the site. Do you have any control over how that, how that lot is configured and will you be, would you be able to do something like that? Is that your, your control of that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, I'll address the second issue because it is, it is a significant issue. That's not the property my client's buying and staff suggested flipping as though this is all one party. That's not the property that's in the contract, it's not the property that's being sold to my client. It does present some significant challenges for both the seller and the buyer for staff to suggest just flip things around here. It's, we're not talking about single parties as staff noted their Suncor developer and then my client ultimately. And then the architect addressed the sign.
Okay, thank you. As the architect, I feel there's some real serious negative aspects about flipping the building to the other side and some real business problems. The site, as you see it now, has 27 parking spaces. We require 26. When we flip it over, we're only coming up with eight spaces on the Alpoilo property. I understand we can have a common parking agreement, but that requires, but that also means that we've lost 11 spaces in the entire shopping center and a, a parking ratio of 300 square foot per car, that's, you know, 3,300 square feet. That's, that's a real business concern.
Flipping the lots out. Let's, let's talk about the sign.
Maybe you can speak to some of the issues that rose with simply as has been just suggested, just to move the menu board from here to the back, what that presents.
Well, one of the major advantages in having the drive-through configured as we have it is we have more than ample queuing distance. We feel as, in terms of traffic safety, there's some serious advantages in preventing cars from stacking in the drive aisles. This is a much safer house.
And simply moving the menu board here doesn't, doesn't provide for that?
I wouldn't expect you to keep the configured parking spots there and move the menu board right next to a parking spot. I just meant in terms of would, are you willing to consider maybe restructuring in some way how to configure your site where you may be able to place the menu board elsewhere. It's just, it's just a, just a thought.
Yes, and, and we love to design sites. It's not a problem to look at alternatives. But, but all the sound numbers that were provided to you, the physics of it, were based on this clear open space. This, this sign is below the level of a wall. And that alone will not make the sound an issue. It is not a problem. It may be a perceived problem, but scientifically, it is not a problem.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Sure, I have a question.
Mr. Gelsner.
I believe it was two commission meetings ago, a parcel in this complex to the east known as the Wiener Schnitzel and the Klosters Freeze basically had a design that was the opposite of yours. Their sign was on the south side, their drive-through was on the east and they didn't seem to have any problems and they breezed right through commission. So my question to you is, do you want a denial or do you want a continuance? Which would you prefer?
Mr. Chairman.
Have either one.
Commissioner Gelsner, the essence of a use permit is that properties are different and staff has submitted to you a site plan for McDonald's. It's a completely different site. It's more acreage. It's a completely different orientation, a lot more space to work with. The site that you see here is the site that's been sold that works for this size of a restaurant with the number of parking spaces that the city requires. And as you can see, where it's located, it's very different than the Wiener Schnitzel. The Wiener Schnitzel was completely open within the site. It didn't have the constraints that you find here on the west side of the, of the sight line. It has the curb and has some of the constraints with the drive aisles. It's a different site altogether and that orientation doesn't, doesn't work.
You said every site is different, but tonight is drive-through night at DZ zoning commission.
We would like to drive through. Recommendation of approval.
However, you know, we've seen two drive-throughs already. We're going to see another one after this and this is the only one that staff is recommending denial. And I, and so the question boils down to is how can you make your site work so that our staff is satisfied with it? Because at this point, they're not satisfied and if staff isn't satisfied and they're the experts, why should I go against them even though I have a degree in geography?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, we have worked on this site. We wouldn't be coming before you if we didn't feel that there were opportunities to do something different. All the suggestions tonight that the commission has given us, we've, we've talked about and we told you how that it doesn't work. We wouldn't be before you tonight if we weren't open to new ideas to how to make this work. We've been working with staff on this for a few months and we're getting anywhere. We're here tonight to get some more suggestions and the suggestions you've given us are the same ones. We feel we've made the case that the requirement is that the sign not be visible and, and not have any negative audibility for the residents and we've met that standard. We feel like we've done that. And I'm not hearing from the commission that we have not done that particularly and I'm looking for some, some information from you all to tell me we haven't met the standard. If that's what you're saying, I haven't heard that. I'm sensing that from Commissioner Gelsner, but I'm not hearing the commission members tell us what we need to do and provide solutions.
I don't think, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not your job to tell us that you haven't met the standard or you have met the standards. You know, we don't think that you have met the standards and we don't think that you're, you're complying with the way other people are laying out drive-throughs. If, if your drive-through met the same standards as everybody, as, as the other ones and each one is unique, then we wouldn't be having this long discussion about it. But, but basically, your standards, your, your design has created, you know, concern and consternation with staff, with the neighbors who live across the street from you, from the location, and it's created some concern among the commission. So I, so I, you know, I, you know, I'm, I'm telling you that you have not met our standards. You may have met the standards as far as the written rule is concerned, but as far as the spirit of the commission goes, I don't think you have. And, and thus, you know, I've given you, you know, I've given you where my position is. You know, you can have a continuance and continue working on it or you can take a denial and you can go to city council and see what they say. And I can, you've been to city council and so have I, Dustin, and I think you know what they're going to say.
Appreciate your comments.
Mr. Bay and then Ms. Lortano.
Oh, I'm sorry. Because, because, well, actually I have a question for staff stuff. So if you would like to speak to them.
Okay. I, I, I think what you have set forth with the material element of the possible harm to the neighbors, I do not think at this point you've proven there wouldn't be possible harm after hearing two of the neighbors and their concerns. Sound does have a lot of variables that travel with it. On a quiet night, you know, anyone who's been at the quiet room, you're going to hear things a lot more than you are in the middle of the day. And I think that's one of the concerns is, you know, at 10 o'clock at night when the neighborhood is quiet, that they are possibly going to hear that sound. I understand you have thought of ideas about dealing with the, put a sign up, but you know, there's no way to say that that shift manager working that night is going to input that sign and not use the box because it's simpler for them. What I would like to see is that you do work out a plan, that you do move the sign to the back. And then I think at that point, if you can move it and alleviate that rather than just landscaping wants a little bit lower, you know, the sound's going to possibly carry and I really don't think that you've met that burden with regard to that. And I'd like to see that you work again with staff before I would give my approval. So I would suggest maybe a continuance. I'm actually agreeing with Commissioner Gelsner over there. So I, I, I think that one might be a good move for you to continue to work out the site and I'm sure with the architects that they could work out something that would work with all the parties involved.
Mr. Bay. Okay. Unlike Commissioner Lortano and Commissioner Gelsner, I believe that they have made a case and I believe that they have gone above and beyond to try to mitigate the sound. But my question is really to staff because what was presented to us today seemed to be very extensive in terms of expenses and, and grading and all of these kinds of things to try to minimize the sound and, and the light spillage out into the neighborhood and into surrounding areas. And so I wanted to ask staff, had, had you had this presentation? Have you, did you know that the driveway was going to be excavated? Did you know that the landscaping was there and the wall, wall was there? And, and if you did know that, why did you feel that that did not meet the requirements?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, the applicant did submit some conceptual plans to staff that showed reduction in the drive aisle lanes by about 1.8 feet. This applicant has also shown a four and a half foot screen wall or a three foot screen wall is normally shown. However, the applicant did not show staff the additional screen walls that would basically screen or help screen the menu board from the north or from the west and from the east as vehicles travel in both directions on McDowell Road.
Well.
And I also wanted to add that the applicant has not given staff any information regarding the noise of the squawk box either.
Until, until tonight.
Until tonight.
Okay, so then my, my question is then, now that you've had that information, do you feel that you could move forward and work with them in mitigating those barriers based on the site restrictions that they have? Do you feel that you could, those types of elements would allow them to minimize the impact on the neighborhood as, as you stated earlier?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Bay, I want to take a step back and point out to you again that Lot 15 has not been subdivided yet. And so the applicant's proposal to develop an Alpoilo co on this site is creating problems. The site doesn't allow them to meet our design guidelines or zoning ordinance or the intent of it. They may be trying to or attempting to mitigate, mitigate many of the impacts that it could have on surrounding properties. And staff appreciates that effort, but staff is 100% convinced that they can redesign that site and place the menu board behind the restaurant and the squawk box. The property is under contract right now by Glimcher. Glimcher Properties is trying to market the site to WKS Development, which wants to develop the Alpoilo co.
Okay, so then I guess I'm sort of stuck in a, in past here because for me personally, my job here is to say whether or not this thing, this, this applicant meets the requirements for a use permit. And from my perspective, it does. But the question here is, is that you have real issues with how this particular facility is going to be able to design itself, the site plan, all of the, all the types of things that staff has to do to mitigate the issues that's really before us today, which really, you know, it's, it's really just a sidebar quite frankly to what it is we're really supposed to be trying to do here tonight. And that is to find out whether or not this is a compatible use for the site. So it sounds to me as though really what the issue is, is that the site has some limitations according to staff and, and with the design, at least the preliminary design that you have before you, you don't feel that any, any steps that they take will mitigate the impacts and therefore saying that this site is improper. Is that your issue?
Commissioner Bay, we don't believe the applicant to this point has presented a site plan that staff can support to go along with the use permit. We can't see a site plan at this point that we would support. It's going to be hard supporting it in the future.
But if it were McDonald's coming in with a double driveway, you think it would be okay?
Mr. Chairman, can I? One other issue that, let's step back in history a little bit on this particular parcel. This particular parcel, when the zoning was approved by the planning commission, city council went through, they provided a conceptual site plan to the commission council. And at that time, we had one pad, we had one building of 9,000 square feet with over 100 parking spaces on this particular parcel. So since that time, that's what was approved through the zoning. And that's what we showed the neighbors. That's what we went through the neighborhood and the Suncor convinced the neighborhood and convinced the commission and council that was what we were going to approve. Now we have a site plan that has 13,160 square foot retail buildings, two retail buildings over 9,000 square feet plus and Alpoilo co drive-through restaurant. Quite a bit more than what was originally presented at the zoning. So we, the self, the, the site constraints and site limitations are created by the applicant. They're not created by staff and they have put us in this position to try to conform with the design standards. So I think at this point in time, we're, we are trying to be sensitive to the neighborhood, but they need to realize they're overbuilding on this lot that they originally tried to zone at a much lower density. So that's, that's the, that's a main issue.
Okay, so does, does staff have any say-so over lot splits or anything like that? I mean, aren't there some requirements for parcel usage based on square footage and lot configuration?
Well, this is, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, this is a PAD. It's subject to change. We're okay with change. There, I don't believe there's a minimum lot size. David can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. But, but there are site design special considerations on layout and that's what we're addressing.
No, thank you. I appreciate the background.
So. Back up the line. Other comments or discussions, questions? I am looking at this a little bit differently and closer to, to the discussion that Harvey just presented. At the time that this PAD was approved here and in the city council, there was an understanding between Suncor and the Palm Valley neighbors to the north. There were a number of issues including noise, light spillage, the types of uses that would go along the north side of the property. When we had the Wiener Schnitzel case. When we had the Wiener Schnitzel case, uh, it was pretty early on that, uh, that applicant understood that, uh, good neighborhood relations were, uh, a, a thing that they wanted to achieve, and therefore they agreed to put their sign and, uh, order board, uh, to the south of their building and, uh, in, in consideration. Uh, I think that what we have here is premature, and, uh, I, I'd be certainly willing to, uh, undertake a, a recommendation for a continuance, but I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We don't have a subdivided piece of, uh, uh, property here. We've got, based on the PAD, we have, uh, a, a plan for a single building. I think that it's not our job to make right the selection of a piece of property which forces you into a configuration that is not reasonably compatible with the neighborhood. And I'll say it, I don't think that putting the order board on the north side is compatible with the understanding that we had with the community relative to this project, the whole cornerstone project. And, uh, I would recommend either denial or a continuance, uh, because I would like to see the entire proj- the entire, uh, pad, uh, addressed before we address the use permit for, um, this particular use.
Mr. Chairman. Do you, um, do you want to invite the developer to speak to this at all and whether, how he wants to, um, handle the?
The developer's here? Yep, please.
Lot 15, because it's his property or it may become his property.
Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission, I'm John Schottenstein. I'm senior vice president with Glimcher Aventure Southwest, and I'm one of the principals of the firm. Um, Commissioner Gelsner, what, what is your, what did you want me to address?
Well, Chairman Horstman, basically, I mean, as, as Director Kraus said, the, when, I was not on the commission when this went before, um, council and the commission, but I was sitting in the audience getting ready to take my spot. And so I do remember that this was one building in this pad, and there were many discussions, um, concerning this whole PAD, this whole Lowe's Penny's parcel and the, and the effect it was gonna have on the neighborhood to the north. And so you've basically bought a parcel of land that previously had been presented to the commission, presented to the city, as gonna be one building of 9,000 square feet. Now you're telling, now you're, now nobody has told us, other than the applicant who wants to buy a third of that parcel, that he wants to put a restaurant here, and oh by the way, we're gonna put two other buildings here. Um, we're not real happy about the way that is transpiring, so we're giving you an opportunity to tell us why you think that's a good idea and why you think we ought to move right along on this thing. Because right now, it doesn't sound like the commission is gonna move right along.
Commissioner Gelsner, Mr. Chairman, um, we submitted our site plan to Suncor, which was the process that we understood we had to follow in order to get it approved, because there was a process that they had within their development that would sort of mirror their, the process with you, and if I'm correct, Mark, that's, that's how it works.
They had an approval letter.
Right, so we, we submitted this plan to Suncor, they approved it. It is our understanding from them as, uh, as, uh, Mr. Kraus mentioned, I couldn't see his name there on the, on the marker. As Mr. Kraus mentioned, it is our understanding that that was flexible, that the original plan that was submitted showed one building, but that there was some flexibility in what could go on that site. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. So with our architect and Suncor, we submitted this plan that you see here today, which we believed was a workable plan, um, and we still believe it's a workable plan. Uh, I certainly hear what the commission has said this evening, um, and, uh, and we certainly have no intention of upsetting the neighbors, upsetting the, the, uh, the development there. That is not our intention. We honestly believed that by lowering that road and building that wall, we mitigated that, that situation. I, I certainly have heard all of you this evening, uh, on your position, but I don't, I don't believe that we have impacted that site that intensively more than it was intended originally. It's clearly more intensive, uh, but we think it's a, a good, uh, addition to the center. It will bring sales tax revenue to the city, uh, it will, uh, bring tenants to the neighbors, and it will provide a shopping experience for, uh, the people there in Palm Valley.
You know, I agree with everything you said, except the traffic patterns and the, and the, and the menu boards and everything. This will be the only menu board facing north on McDowell Road in that whole strip. And I, you know, you have not demonstrated to me why you should be given an exception when other restaurants seem to be easily able to comply with the desires of, the desires of staff and desires of the commission and, quite honestly, the desires of council when you, when you get there.
Commissioner Gelsner, Mr. Chairman, I, I understand your position, and, and I think we wanna, we wanna take a look at that. I, I would like to point out, though, it will be the only menu board that is, what is that, four foot six feet below the wall?
Yeah, but when the monsoon comes, it'll be flooded and nobody can drive through anyway.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last comments, questions? Anyone else in the audience like to speak to this case? Mr. Jones, the last word.
I just wanted to, uh, qualify, uh, some of our statements I made just briefly a little while ago, uh, particularly to the neighbors, and wanted to apologize for not providing the sound attenuation and decibel levels to them at the neighborhood meeting. Those were not available to us yet, but staff hadn't asked that, they hadn't made the sound or the menu board fronting on McDowell Road an issue. And anticipation of this meeting, obviously knew that that was something that would need to be addressed, and we made it available, but I apologize to you, that's why we didn't have it at the time, uh, and we just presented it tonight at this hearing. Appreciate, uh, the comments that you have raised. It sounds like the commission would like us to continue this case, to meet with staff some more and see how the three buildings on the site can work together, yeah, in harmony. I can't commit that you're going to have a site plan that comes back to you that has one building, which is what Suncor presented conceptually, conceptually.
I don't think we're asking for that.
But we will work with staff and, and make some additional steps to make sure that the site works for everybody.
If there are no further comments, I'll close the public hearing and ask for staff, uh, commission action.
Chairman Horstman.
Mr. Bay.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we continue case 05-300-00008, uh, to give the applicant, uh, opportunity to, uh, spend time with staff to better define the configuration of this plot.
Let's second that motion. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do we have a date specific on that?
Uh, our next meeting is the 19th.
Is that too, is that too, too close?
Yes.
Two weeks is fine.
Two weeks is fine. Okay.
We're on the 19th. I'd like to amend that most to the 19th. We have a motion to continue the, the case until our regular meeting of the 19th of April. I have a second from Mr. Gelsner. Follow-up question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. I think, uh, my reason for nay is that, uh, number one, I think that's too soon, and, uh, I would support, uh, at least a month or perhaps two months.
Thank you, Mr. DeBrocker. Motion carries five to one.
We have five minutes to break.
Yes, take a, a brief five-minute break.
Make your reasonable.
9:05.[1198.13]
Planning Commission back to order. Our next case is case 05-200-00030 Pebble Creek Retail rezoning. Request for approval to rezone 2.7 acres generally located on the east side of Pebble Creek Parkway, 800 feet south of Virginia Avenue, from the Agricultural AG District to the General Commercial C2 District. The applicant is CNC Pebble Creek Retail LLC. Open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. The subject 2.7 acre property is highlighted in black on this exhibit and is generally located on the east side of Pebble Creek Parkway, 800 feet south of Virginia Avenue. This is the subject parcel. Located just east of the property is the Goodyear Planed Regional Center. Label is a West Core Site. Located to the west is Palm Valley Phase 8. Located to the northwest Pebble Creek and also to the northeast is Pebble Creek. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from the Agricultural District to the General Commercial District in order to construct a commercial development consisting of one office building and one commercial building. This is the conceptual site plan. That the applicant wishes to follow if he gains approval or recommendation of approval. The applicant is proposing a single-story building consisting of 6,400 square feet and this is that single-story building and the applicant right now envisions retail at the site. The applicant is also proposing a two-story building, 10,000 square feet on each floor for a total of two floors. Development will be accessible by two access points on Estrella Parkway. One of the access points is located here at the north of the site and a cross-axis easement will be provided so that vehicles that use this entrance can also gain entrance to the north developments. There's also an access point at the south end of the development. These are the conceptual building elevations. Staff is generally supportive of the front elevations, the elevations that face Pebble Creek Parkway. However, staff believes the rear elevations need additional articulation in order to achieve consistent four-sided architecture and those are the back elevations. As you can see, the elevations are concealed by some palm trees and so staff will need more information during the site plan and design review.
Are you giving yourself an X-ray?
I just saw your bones go across the screen.
That's the scary part.
Negative button.
Okay. Oh, I see.
There you go, alright.
In conclusion, staff is recommending approval of this rezoning request. The proposed general commercial zoning is consistent with the regional commercial land use designation for the subject property as outlined in the city's general plan and the proposed commercial development should be compatible with surrounding properties. This concludes my presentation. The applicant's staff are available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for staff, Mr. Gelsner.
Could you put the aerial depth on more? North of this property, south of Virginia Avenue, there's the old Engle trailer up there and I believe the site just south of the Engle trailer was a site that was used, that previously was approved for the West Valley View, except they've gone away. What's gonna happen on that site or what's, what do we think is happening on that site? Does that site still hold
Chairman Horstman.
...commercial or industrial rights to it?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Gelsner, the property immediately to the north is in fact a former West Valley View site and this property was rezoned to general commercial. Staff hasn't seen any proposals for this site yet and please correct me if I'm wrong, but staff has seen proposals for the southeast corner in which the developer wishes to...
There is a site plan in on it.
Okay.
And then as you were pointing out, the property at the intersection is scheduled for, I believe, the next
Wells Fargo.
The next meeting for rezoning from, I think it's from PAD to C2 to unify the zoning on that property and so you'll be seeing that one at your next meeting.
Wells Fargo Bank.
And it's a Wells Fargo Bank drive-through that they're proposing on the corner.
Joke.
Okay.
Can you show us an Elmo or which sites you're talking about and what's in and what's out again?
Okay. Basically, this property is zone C2 and then this property at the corner is PAD and there's a rezoning request in to change this from PAD to C2 to unify the zoning on the property.
Okay.
There's a, there's a property line somewhere else in here, I believe, and there is a site plan in on this and then the site, there's been a conceptual site plan submitted on this property with the rezoning that shows it to be developed with a Wells Fargo bank with drive-up windows.
Okay, and then to the north of Virginia Avenue on the corner is commercial and then to the north of that across from Pebble Creek is gonna be multifamily, is that correct?
Courthouse.
Well, yeah, courthouse, multi...I thought it was multifamily.
Mr. Chairman, it's a parcel 12. I believe it's courthouse parcel. Engle's in the process of purchasing that parcel and will be coming with a site plan on it.
That was where we carved the APS station out of, right? Way to the north.
It extends, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe there's a commercial parcel to the north.
It's part of the Goodyear PRC and we don't have that in front of us tonight.
It's parcel 12 and it is a courthouse parcel. There isn't a commercial to the north of Virginia and it's all...
Okay, so that's all one parcel to the north?
I believe it's all one parcel and it goes all the way around the substation up to the northern boundary and that's courthouse parcel and they're in the process of designing that development at this time. In fact, I just talked to them today.
Okay, so ignore the blue, the two blue lines, you know, that divide the north and the south of Virginia Avenue on these properties because the bank's gonna be there but they're gonna tie that together with the old West Valley View site, right?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, there's four actual, four separate lots on the area from Virginia South to the end of this property in question.
Okay.
There's four separate lots and the property to the north was, was zoned separately with part of the PAD with Goodyear Planed Regional Center and they're taking, and they're making it C2 so they can do a unified development to the properties to the south and we have a site plan in on that and the particular property. That was what was zoned for West Valley View Warehouse a couple of years ago.
And then, and then a question now, across the street south of the ballpark, which is currently in the process of being graded and that's all commercial, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, I... Commissioner Gelsner, are you speaking about the property over here?
Correct, yeah.
This will actually...
Where the, you know, the drain, where there used to be drainage ditch and everything just north of the white box.
This is actually programmed to be medium-density residential by Suncor.
Okay, and then, and then just to the north of the, basically the southwest corner of Virginia and Pebble Creek Parkway, right there, is that gonna be commercial?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of staff?
Just a comment. This is much improved over a mortuary.
Is there gonna be a mortuary in here? No, yes, there was a proposal for a mortuary where the, the church used to be and the, the manager of the Outback lived for a while and then sold it. There was a proposal for a mortuary there.
Welcome to Pebble Creek.
It, it was not approved.
I must've been out of the loop on that one.
That was a long time ago.
I was waiting for my time.
That was a chewy one.
Just one question to staff. David, did I hear you say something to the nature of you were going to work with them to improve the face, frontage of this? I'm sorry, I must've misunderstood you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beck. Back elevation is difficult. It's difficult to see what exactly the applicant is proposing due to the fact that there's palm trees hiding the elevations and so staff believes that there won't be any issues during the site plan review process in which we also conduct a design review in order to hatch up the elevations to the rear.
Alright, thank you. Because this is a good-looking property. Thank you very much.
Fight the applicant up so we can tell them what a great job it looks.
Come for your praise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission here tonight, I'm Tim Wagner representing CNC Pebble Creek, the retail center for LLC and we do want to thank you very much for your opportunity and tonight presenting here in front of you and we do also want to mention that we do not have any drive-throughs here tonight. So, so we do...
Does this surprise you?
So I am here open to take any questions from you this evening.
Just for curiosity's sake, it looks as if you have three retail shops. Is that...I mean, and when you kind of look at it, it looks like maybe there's six stores, but then when you look at the other part of your, your drawing, it looks like possibly it's really three.
It's actually a multi-use. There are multiple suites in there.
You really haven't decided how many actually...
Exactly, right. So we're trying to define the users and work with the architect through that coordination.
Well, the architecture is beautiful.
Thank you very much.
Just build it, better build it the way it looks on the picture. Otherwise, there'll be a lot of disappointed people.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, we also, you know, we'd be glad to also remove some of the palm trees as David was in.
Yeah, I, I too would, when I opened this up, I, I said, wow, this is a great base to, to start the regional center and all that it can be and I commend you because that, this is innovative. One of the things you've seen tonight is drive-throughs, fast food, restaurants is something other than a drive-through because us old folks in Pebble Creek, we kind of enjoy sitting down and having a leisurely dinner with a beverage.
Absolutely.
And, you know, once in a while we might, I, I don't use drive-throughs. That's too fast for me.
Mr. Chairman, we appreciate that and actually we are working with three different restaurant users at this point in time for hopefully the end cap of the retail space there and excited about that and hope to bring that environment to that area. We've also, as you can see on the, the front area, try to recognize your pedestrian theme and bring that into the center too so we can kind of create that courtyard, a really user-friendly appearance for the area too, so.
Now, the, the last piece may be difficult because we've tried to do this before. RID would let you use a little of their water just to create a fountain or something, water feature along the RID.
Well, I was hoping that they would put some park benches there and so people could sit out, eat their meal and float down the river.
Until the pickup trucks come ripping by on the right of the maintenance road and kick up a couple of tons of dust.
This is APS country so we should be in competition with SRP in the rafting environment, I think.
Maybe fishing.
There we go.
Maybe fishing. Okay, great job.
Thank you very much.
Are you also involved with the property to the north?
No, we're not.
Okay, okay. Gee, that's unfortunate.
Thank you very much.
Other, other questions or comments for the developer? We thank you for being here tonight and for bringing a really nice-looking project to the city.
Thank you very much for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this case?
Testify?
Testify. We got a lawyer in the room. We gotta testify. Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve and recommend case 05-200-0000030 Pebble Creek Retail rezoning from AG District to General Commercial C2 District. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Bay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Application is recommended for approval. Our next case is case 05-300-0009 Burger King use permit. A request for the approval of a use permit for Burger King for a drive-through restaurant generally located on 1.33 acres on the west side of Litchfield Road, 250 feet north of Indian School Road and the Palm Valley Village Neighborhood Shopping Center. The applicant is Looker and Capello Architects. Open the public hearing. Ask for the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Subject 37,000 square foot parcel is located on the west side of Litchfield Road in the Palm Valley Planary Development just east of the new Walmart Neighborhood Market and the parcel is located on pad number two, approximately 340 feet north of Indian School Road. The applicant is requesting a use permit for convenience use to allow for the development of a Burger King restaurant with a drive-up window. Before moving on to the conceptual site plan, I wanted to show you the Palm Valley Village site plan as it will be plotted. It will be plotted this way with the Burger King restaurant located in this location. Try the autofocus there. Doesn't seem to be working. Located just to the north of the Burger King is a building called Shops B and then just to the south Shops A. Located to the west of that is a bank and all of these developments or site plans have come in for staff review already.
David, could you give, just a quick question. You said there's a bank there? I didn't see a drive-through. Does the bank not have a drive-through?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, the bank does not have a drive-through.
Okay, thank you.
And this is the conceptual site plan for the Burger King restaurant. I'll just zoom out a little bit more to get a better idea of how it interacts with the street. The applicant is proposing a 3,305 square foot restaurant with indoor restaurant seating, a playground area and a drive-through component. The front of the building features Litchfield Road, an orientation that will enhance the Litchfield Road streetscape. Customers that utilize the drive-through will order from the menu board behind the restaurant and it's also, there'll also be a squat box behind the restaurant. Customers will then, customers and vehicles will then proceed south and then to the east side or rather to the south side of the restaurant to pay for and pick up their order. The applicant has indicated that the hours of operation for the restaurant will be from 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM. As such, staff has added stipulation that limits the drive-through hours to these, or the drive-through operation to these hours. Primary vehicle access will be from driveways extending Indian School Road and Litchfield Road and a total of 27 onsite parking spaces will serve the development. These are the conceptual building elevations. Staff is generally supportive of the architecture and building materials which are in compliance with the Palm Valley Village design guidelines. The citizen review being withheld in February, two residents from Litchfield Park attended. They also had questions about the proposed squat box and site lighting and staff believes that the applicant has successfully addressed these concerns with the neighbors and with the rest of the department. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the use permit request. The overall site design, including the configuration of the drive-through lane, menu board and pickup window are in compliance with the city's zoning ordinance and design guidelines. In addition, the applicant has successfully addressed questions raised by staff regarding the restaurant's exhaust system, which is responsible for filtering particulate matter from the charbroilers. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and staff are available for any questions.
Questions for staff?
Just a nitpicky. David, on number three, I took that as 10:00 in the morning until noon and I think it should be 12:00 midnight. Is that correct?
12:00 midnight, yes. It should state that.
Instead of a, let's say 12:00 midnight. 12:00 AM is, that's appropriate. 12:00 PM is noon.
12:00 PM, noon. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's okay. Alright, nitpicky.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none. Does the applicant wish to address this? Since there weren't any questions, you probably don't want to say two.
No, I've been to a few of these. Jeff Looker, Looker and Capello Architects, 27th to East Southern Tempe. We've read the staff report. The conditions are acceptable with one little teeny change. Number three, the hours of operation, we did say six in the neighborhood meeting. Since then, the operations people have said, well, if you could get it to be five, that would even be better. They probably will stay with six, but the stipulated at six, they, like, maybe stipulated five if that's acceptable.
It's like five to midnight and 24 hours on the drive-through so you don't have to come back
Sure.
Five years from now.
That would be great.
Since we did it for somebody else.
May not use it all, but, you know, it'd be better to have the option. Other than that, we're, we're fine.
Is that acceptable to staff?
Whoa.
What did they say at the neighborhood meeting?
So what was the question?
We did that.
We just, we did, we did 25...
Added 24 hours.
The only, the only difference, in this particular case, we do have neighborhood, we do have a residential area fairly close and the other case we did not and I believe it was McDonald's you did.
So there was multifamily housing going right north of McDonald's or in that, in that?
No, it's commercial.
Right across.
Across the street. I'd have to defer to David and see what was said at the neighborhood meeting if there are any comments at the neighborhood meeting.
Yeah, it didn't seem like the hours were as big a deal as some of the other issues. They asked, I think we kind of threw out the six to 12. I don't know that that was a huge concern. It was one, it was a husband and wife. It was one, it was a husband and wife that lived across, across the road. So I don't know, I don't think it was a big deal to them, you know, the one-hour difference.
I think your sign off the east side, I think we ought to give you something to return.
Right, now that was a big deal for them.
And we don't have any problems.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I need that we approve 05-300-0009 with the change in stipulation number three for the hours of operation to be five to 12:00 a.m. And a 24-hour drive-through.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Gelsner. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Would you like to elaborate?
I don't believe that this is truly a harmonious user for that area and I don't agree with the 24-hour drive-through.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-1. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission? Bring on staff communications.
Chairman, I just want to remind you, April 19th, we have a pretty extensive agenda, so meetings. I don't have anything else to keep you thinking. And that concludes our comments, unless you have any questions.
Anything to report on City Center?
That was my answer to the question. And the ballpark.
Chairman Horstman and Commissioners, we have just gotten a draft in of the, well revised draft of the City Center Plan that we intend to share with the property owners to keep that iterative, iterative process moving along. And so hopefully we can make some progress with that before the end of the month this month.
Just a question, Joe. City Council just adopted a site for bringing in a minor league team. Is that still going to then impact the City Center Plan? Are you looking to maybe revise it to include that site?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Bay, we certainly are looking to accommodate it, I would say. And I don't think that the proposed location is at all inconsistent with what we had in mind for the City Center. So yes, we would, we would definitely make the adjustments necessary to accommodate it and in fact that we already have. It's a lot easier to change at this point.
Yeah, I know. Any further business before the commission? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.